All right. Welcome to study session. Welcome to detention. That's what it was when I was a kid. Let's start off with the pledge of allegiance. If Ms. Joanne Coletta could lead us, that would be great. All right. At this time, the meeting's in order. Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to complete a speaker card. They're blue, they're in the back, or they're over here. Let the record state that Channing was late. Please note, state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on those items. Please observe a three-minute limit. Once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for communication from the public.
All right. Thanks, Sylvia. Let's go to the first, agenda items. Community conversations, events update. I know the agenda says it's going to be Amina, but it's going to be Justin. So our assistant city manager, Justin Tucker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, council. We are back talking about the community conversations. We'll provide a little update and seek your direction. The ask today is that the council provide direction on community conversations events, the program design, and their frequency. We brought this to council in February of 2024. We gave you some options to consider hosting the same events each year, rotate through a list of community groups, change the format and do something completely different, and/or host these events as needed. And the item was requested be brought back to council for staff direction on the future events. So the background once again is that the city's strategic plan asks that we pursue opportunities to highlight the contributions of Latinx, Asian, Indigenous, and Black residents to Corona's history, culture, and current community. So the city created these events called community conversations, which consist of cultural entertainment, panel discussions, and social receptions. And we've had successful events for Black History Month, AAPI, and Hispanic Heritage Month, many of which you've attended. So after doing this for the last couple of years, we've learned some lessons. And we have some additional interest from other community groups, Native American groups, Indigenous groups, veterans, LGBTQ+, interfaith, and refugees. They're all part of our community as well, who've expressed some interest. And so some of the recommendations could be that we could continue to issue proclamations as requested, hold community conversations as the need arise based on local, state, national events, have celebrations, which would be different than conversations, to celebrate the diverse cultures that exist in our community. And we could also pursue cosponsorships that support third-party community organizations who want to put on these cultural events. So we're back with some proposed event types and scheduling. So the proposal for you today is to have community conversations as needed. Those conversations would be formal, tough, curated conversations with members of our community. And those would be similar to the format we have now without the sort of celebration and festivities that take place, but they would just be focused on the conversation. A second type of event would be a community celebration, which we would host annually. That'd be international food festival, cultural celebrations, a large-sized event like a giant community party. And then also hold cultural event cosponsorships annually. And these could be wrapped into our fee waiver-type program, where we provide in-kind fee waivers for staff support. We would promote those on the city's social media channels, and they could be coordinated with our special event staff. So these three different types of events are one way forward that we are proposing to address the community conversations question. And so our ask is that the council provide direction on these community conversation events, program design, and frequency. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
My bad. Let's go with comments. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Any of you guys want to ask? Besides Jackie, any of you guys want to ask questions? Tony?
I do. Could you go back a couple of slides to the options? There you go. Nope, that was it. So do we have any type of culture event or community celebration? Because I can think of a couple that are around us, per se. The first one that comes to mind is the Orange International Street Fair. But that's over a weekend, and it shuts down the whole roundabout in the city of Orange, or the whole circle in the city of Orange. Yeah, I think the city's in partnership with a lot of different events and industries. But the ones that I can think about, except for the one in Orange, are all cultural-specific. Eastville's got the... I can't think of it. Yeah, Lunar Festival. But that's celebrating one culture versus a multicultural. And to me, I guess the concern about that is that I want to celebrate all of them, but I don't want them to have to compete with each other, is my opinion. And I believe if I read this correctly, staff feels that they could hold two community conversations well per year. Do I remember that correctly? I think the challenge with that is that with the nine that you had suggested or listed, and there could be more. I mean, for example, Hispanic Heritage would be every three and a half years is when we would be able to have that type of community conversation. So it's very difficult for me to... And it's not really a question, it's a statement. It's very difficult for me to want to have a community celebration, which I like the idea. I just don't know if I want them to have to compete with each other, but could be done well. And the limited of community conversations is also a challenge for me. I would have loved to have had five or six in a year, but I recognize that maybe it may be difficult for staff to do that. I just don't know how we can not be the driver. What can we do to help facilitate that for other people, or get them to want to facilitate that themselves with us being a sponsor and providing maybe a location or something along those lines? So I wish that there was some more information about how we could get that accomplished. Because I think the community conversations are great. It's one of my favorite things that we do, and I want to do more of them, not less than them. Sorry. Those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thanks. Wesley?
I mean, the original community conversation came about because of George Floyd and all the other stuff. And I loved it. I'd see it on YouTube and try and tune in to kind of hear stuff. And that was one of the original drivers. And I think it got morphed over time because we didn't have an issue or didn't have this, exactly you said, formal, tough, curated, to kind of highlight a specific issue. So I'm not hung up on not having a community conversation unless there's one that needs to be had. And I think we're all pretty open to hearing if folks have something that they think needs to get discussed. And there's something that needs to get discussed in the community? Yeah, love to have them. More information, the better. The community celebrations. I think Cinco de Mayo, that's one that's been going on for a very long time. Yep, there were some issues this year, but it kind of came together at the end. There are other opportunities for folks, for us to participate. And I think... I meant to look up the last time that you said something about the International Street Fair. And I think there is, in the Chamber of Commerce or somebody else, there's a few other drivers of cities as a sponsor, I think. I'm 100% positive. And then for the Lunar Festival, I think the city of Eastville takes the lead role, correct? For the Lunar Festival? Yeah. And with all their Amazon money they steal from us every year, they can certainly pay for it. We don't have any Amazon money we steal from anybody. So I don't see us in a position where we're going to run some big celebration. I think we have the things that we've spelled out, and we do really well. Fourth of July, we have our summer concert series. I think just letting people know that we're open to them, especially we have a space for them. We make it, some sponsorships that we can do that really turns into a community celebration instead of something else. So that's kind of my thoughts. I'd like to see us step away from the community conversation part unless there's something to talk about. Maybe do some advertising that we're open and available to partnerships, but we can't do the work. I think Councilmember Casillas got wrapped up in one of those. And I think it needs to be really driven from the community side. And frankly, it makes it more authentic and more true to how people feel versus having the city craft it. You know, maybe I'm open to maybe doing one other large celebration. The city used to do a lemon festival in conjunction with a couple of other groups. And I'm not proposing one. I'm just saying that there's other opportunities. If there's an appetite or if there's capacity is that we don't do one of these community conversations or we don't do those on a regular basis, that there's some other opportunity that we can celebrate our community as a whole. I was being interviewed today, and somebody asked me... They were from Los Angeles, from the L.A. Times. And they asked me what I thought. If you're not from Corona, what makes Corona Corona? And I said, "Well, the question is, what do you think makes Corona?" So her comment back to me was, "Oh, it's a best-sleeping bedroom community." And I said, "Well, you should look at our new brand. We want you to feel like you belong and that you feel like you're part of the community." And I think now, more than ever, we've become a very diverse, very welcoming... Of course, there's always issues, but I would say for the most part. I go to the farmer's market on Saturday morning, and I'm walking around, picking up strawberries for my mom. And I'm looking around, and I'm seeing every race, creed, color, nationality, young, old. Love it. Absolutely love it. And I think if there's opportunities for us to celebrate Corona and everybody that lives here, I think the better. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Tucker. So I think that these buckets are 100% correct, the definition of what each one would be. And I think that why we find ourselves having this conversation is because community conversations ended up being all of these things. And that's not the original intent. And one could argue that maybe by virtue of trying to be all these things, we weren't doing the one original thing well. So to Councilmember Speaks' point, community conversations really did arise from a time that we were seeing just a lot of social unrest and requests to have and to hold spaces in our public space where we can try to work through or talk through and find some middle ground, some common ground around our community. I don't think that that need has stopped. I think that that is pervasive in our society right now. We need more and more of these spaces where we can get to know one another, find out that we're more alike than we are different, and create some of that community goodwill. So I'm not opposed to having community conversations as needed. That being said, I really don't want to see community conversations go away. I don't want us to suddenly not ask ourselves the tough questions and not be interested in doing the heavy... Community conversations, to do them well, to encourage and have community members that are willing to sit in those panel hot seats and have those questions asked of them, and then to have someone in our community moderate. The programming is a heavy lift. And to do them well, which I think is absolutely necessary, takes a lot. So that being said, I really want to make sure that we're not losing them. So I'm not opposed to them being as needed, but I really hope that that means that we really are turning to community conversations as needed, which I think are probably more often than not. I like the idea of a community celebration, mostly because I think that when the city puts something on, there's kind of like a guarantee of a high quality, that there's going to be a product at the end where the community, there will be... All the details of the event are thought of and executed well. So I like that idea. And we have a very diverse community that wants to see more and more opportunities and more and more events put on that reflect them. I think that's why community conversations, especially when we had the Latinx Heritage Night, why they're so popular in a community that is more than 50% Latin, is because folks want to see their culture and their kids perform and their background highlighted. So I'm interested in a community celebration put on by the city. And for it to focus on international food, I think, is really great. Multicultural is a word that's kind of... Folks are kind of moving away from that. Focusing on food is fantastic. People love different types of food, and having international food's amazing. It's what I originally thought our night markets were going to be like. I thought our night markets were going to be more like international food festivals. And I think if that's the way we do it, they would be very successful. What I think I don't want the community celebration to become is a multicultural night where we end up diminishing people's cultures by having them all... You get one night. All the cultures get one night. That is not a good thing. So if we're doing an international food festival, that's great. If we're doing cultural celebrations that are specific to holidays, that's great. And I think if we're doing them and holding the Corona standard, that's perfect. These things need to be really thoughtful. And then lastly, the cultural event cosponsorship. I am curious how that's different from our nonprofit cosponsorship. Are we taking on and doing more with these groups? Because, again, to Councilmember Speaks' point, it's much more authentic when a group is doing it, and it's not being done by the city. That being said, there are groups that can find themselves with a committee of three. It can be like a group of 30, but like three people are actually doing the work. And what they need is resources and people power. So I'm curious if... And I'll stop talking now, Mr. Tucker. If you could share a little bit more about what the cultural event cosponsorships might look like, what kind of support a city is coordinated with special event staff? What does that mean? And how is this different from our nonprofit cosponsorship grants that we currently have?
So that would be up to the direction of council on how they would want to structure a fee waiver or provide support. Our nonprofit cosponsorships require that they be a nonprofit that has a link to the city. But something like this wouldn't necessarily need that if that was the direction of the council. This is just one of those other ways that we could have a community-driven event where we could provide some staff resources that wasn't like the second one, a community celebration which is really designed by staff and supported by staff with other participation.
I would love to see that fleshed out a little bit more. I don't know if that's another study session or if it's something that the staff can just put together as a proposal. What could we do? Because I think that we might have people watching who would be willing to take on, and maybe them and their group of friends or them and their nonprofit would be willing to take on a Lunar Festival of sorts. Or a Dia de los Muertos event or something. But if only they had a little more outline support from the city. And so I would love to see... What could it look like for a nonprofit? What would it look like for us? What would they have to commit to? Because we want it to be a good, quality event. If we're putting our name on it, it has to be Corona standards.
Can I ask you a question? Just kind of thinking, if it's an outside committee, and then they're asking staff to help them, what is going to prevent what happened to you? Or someone saying at the last minute, "This isn't what I wanted," and then railing against... I want to support. I want to find ways to support. I just think if we're in a programming role or in a role where we're accepting responsibility for X, that all of a sudden becomes our responsibility, and it's a city event. So I love the idea. And hopefully, people listen, and we find a way to get out. And then I don't want to see three people try and put an event together because that means 10 people are going to show up. I wanted to appeal to a lot of people. I want there to be a lot of folks that are interested in coming because they're either getting something out of it. And you're right, food's kind of the thing, or a thing. But what else is going to drive? Because we want to have as many people as possible be exposed to it.
Right. And I guess that's why I'm asking for more information, because I'd love to know, what is the commitment? And the thing that is getting alluded to is I was asked to participate in an event, and then it became, "Why am I not producing everything?" I'm like, wait a second, that's not how it works. So yeah, Mr. Ellis, if you could step in here.
Yeah, Mayor, just to add a little bit of context. The genesis for the cultural event cosponsorships, as I recall, was a recognition that the city shouldn't be the ones that put on every event. And we want to make sure that there's a space for third-party community organizations to put on their own events, but with a little bit more help from the city. And so they really are a lot, just like another cosponsorship event, where we may provide fee waivers for permit fees, for a facility rental, and also promote them on social media, which is what we do today. We just wanted to be more conscious that some of these events are best done by a third party, not the city, and some of them, the city itself sponsors. And so it does get a little messy if we try to both get in there and do it at the same time. Our experience is typically, I think all of your experience with volunteerism, is that you get incredible volunteers that do incredible amounts of work. And other times, you get part-timers that show up, and then the city staff is left trying to put on an event that they never intend to do in the first place. But we wanted to make sure that we're perhaps more open and promoting to the community, to community-based organizations that want to put on cultural events. We have a program for you. Come talk to us, and we can help you with defraying the cost of some of those things. That was the concept there.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that. I remember. I guess I'm over here wondering if there's more we can do. But maybe this is where we start. And maybe once we have those conversations with the nonprofits, with the groups that want to put on events, maybe they can identify what else we can do, and we can consider if the city can do more. I'm okay with this. I'm okay with these proposals. Thank you.
So I enjoyed going to the community conversations. I enjoyed the food at all of them. But I didn't really get much out of them, to be honest. I didn't think they were really tough at all. I think the last one we had was the toughest, and it was only at the end when one of the audience members asked a really hard question. And we were fortunate to have Josh Somali in there who could handle that. But that was the only time of all of these that I went, "Ooh, that is kind of tough." The other ones have just... I don't know if it's... I don't know. I'll just leave it at that. I didn't get much out of them, but I did enjoy them. So Jacob, you had mentioned providing just kind of a space and support for cultural celebrations in our community, but not necessarily us putting them on?
It's a mixture. So some of them would be the city, like an international food festival that we could host, where the city would put on the whole show. And then in other cases, maybe there are events that the city's really not the prime sponsor for, that we should really just be cosponsoring and providing the space and other things. So it's a mixture. We could do some of them ourselves, where council wants us to. And it could be anything from a Lunar New Year to any other kind of event. That's your direction. We're happy to do those. But it may be that you don't want to do every community cultural event, some of those you want to leave for others.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. And then, yeah, I'd like to be able to offer some sort of support to ensure that they can pull it off with fee waivers or whatever. That's up to you. All right, that's all.
Mayor? Yeah? I'm sorry to interrupt. I had a... Councilmember Casillas said something that actually gave me an idea. And so when you're done, or if you'd like me to go now? So it's very rare that these ideas pop in my head. So when they do, I like to make sure I get them out. But it occurred to me that when we put on, and I'm just going to use the Hispanic Heritage Month community conversation, we probably had some sort of internal checklist that we went through. And I wonder if we could develop some sort of checklist that says, "In order to put on a community conversation on a city property, let's just say the chamber's here, we're going to need this, this, and this." going to need this, this, and this." And, and just kind of maybe identify a staff member that could sit with a group for maybe two or three meetings and say, "Okay, these are the checklist items that we need. We're willing to help, you know, secure a date, you know, the co, you know, any type of fees, sponsors or waivers or something like that. This is what you're responsible. The next meeting for this is in a month. You come back with that and we'll see where we're at." Maybe just use that checklist to help walk them through because I think that allows it to be authentic because they're doing it, but it gives them some parameters. This is what we need to have. This is, you know, you need to come up with a topic. You need to come up with attendees, you know, that type of stuff. We will help you pay for the venue, do the lights and stuff, the AV. We'll promote it for you on our social media as well as yours, and we will dedicate a person to help you walk it through the finish line. Maybe something along that line could help. Because I, I think the key, that's, one of the things that she had said is that people may want to, but it could be an intimidating process if they don't know how. And so we're saying, "Listen, we're going to walk you through it. You meet with so-and-so and we kind of go from there." But something like that. And I'm done.
All right.
It's been recorded, don't worry. We can go back.
Yeah. What happened to the mic?
Has anybody else been inspired by Jackie's?
I'm always inspired by her.
All right. I, I agree with everything Jackie said except for the international food. I, I can't stand any of that stuff. It's disgusting. But, but everything else is good. And, and that's where I'm at. I do like from a macro view because I have attended all the cultural events. I like that there's gathering of people. I like that there's society and community. And from a macro view, I feel like these events sponsor education and understanding, and those two are very valuable, education and understanding. So I'm all for them. I love them. I hate the food, but I think that's it.
Thank you for the direction.
All right. So no food.
What you're saying is no tube, no food for Tom, got it?
Yeah.
Hey, all food.
Just call Del Taco. So, all right. Fiscal year up next. I, I think we already did community speaker cards. Up next, number two, fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. Jenny Kinnicutt, Employee of the Year, extraordinaire, Budget Manager. She will present this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget overview. Today, we're going to be talking about an overview of the budget and the process, looking at some special revenue funds, proprietary funds, and the general fund, including Measure X and the general fund forecast. I'm sure you're very familiar with the strategic goals at this point, but I wanted to include them in this presentation to show that this is the framework we used when building the budget for next fiscal year. This is a representation of the budget process for fiscal year 2025. The department started with preparing their information in November. That information was provided to the Finance Department in March, and that is when the review and consolidation of the budget information began. At the end of March, we had the Spring Financial Workshop, and this was the first time that different segments of the information were presented to you. The CFD and LMD process was started in April, and so it will change some of the numbers as we work through that process, but they are being finalized. The CIP information was presented to the Planning Commission on April 22nd, and it was presented to the Parks and Rec Commission last night. We are presenting the overview to you today, and on June 5th, the budget will be brought forward for the adoption, and then July 1st is the beginning of the new fiscal year. Looking at revenue estimates for all of the funds, it is estimated at $454.3 million for next fiscal year. This represents an increase of about $3.9 million from the information we presented at the Spring Financial Workshop. The increases were in general fund by about $376,000, various increases and decreases, such as increases in property tax and decreases in cannabis tax, $580,000 in the enterprise funds due to other revenue and utility service charges, and $2.9 million in internal service funds. Fiscal year 2025 compared to fiscal year 2024 estimates, there is an increase of $2.8 million or 0.6%. Now, looking at the expenditures, they total $464.1 million for next fiscal year. This is an increase of $7.5 million from what we showed you at the Spring Financial Workshop. Some items that have been added are about $5.4 million in the service level changes and about $223,000 with some position changes. Some of these numbers might change before the budget is presented on June 5th, just for the CFD and LMD process being finalized. Fiscal year 2025 compared to fiscal 2024 adopted budget, there's an increase of $16.9 million or 3.8%. Looking at some special revenue funds, they are fund-specific, funds with specific sources that are restricted or committed to specific purposes. This is where you will find all of the road-related funds, special taxing district funds, refuse and recycling, developer impact funds, trip reduction, asset forfeiture, and other grants are in this category as well. The road-related, special taxing districts, and refuse and recycling all equal 92.9% of the special funds operating budget. The first special revenue fund that we will go over is the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, often referred to as RMRA. These funds are collected from fuel sales at the pump when you are filling up your vehicles. These funds can only be used for capital projects related to roads. For fiscal year 2025, the estimated revenues are $3.9 million, which is a decrease of 1.5% as compared to the current fiscal year estimates, and the decrease is in intergovernmental revenues. For the expenditures, the operating budget is $100,004 million comes from various capital improvement projects, all related to roads. Next is gas tax, which is similar to the RMRA fund and how it's collected. However, this one can be used on capital projects and some operating costs as well. This is a good picture of how the three categories that make up the expenditures are broken out. In fiscal year 2025, the revenue is $4.8 million, which is an increase of 2.2% from where we estimate to end the current fiscal year. Increases are in investment earnings and intergovernmental revenue. The total expenditure of $4.6 million is made up of the operating budget, capital improvement projects, and the operating and maintenance projects. The breakdown here is $2.4 million operating budget, $400,000 CIP, and $1.8 million operating and maintenance projects. There's a $10,000 increase in the operating budget and a $200,000 decrease in each of the CIP and O&amp;M budgets as compared to the current fiscal year estimates. Measure A is a half percent sales tax that is collected in Riverside County and distributed by RCTC and can be used for capital projects related to roads in the city. Fiscal year 2025 revenue estimates are $6.3 million and an increase of 3.8% over where we think we will end the current fiscal year. Increases are in investment earnings and intergovernmental revenues and other revenue. The expenditures, again, made up of operating budget, CIP, and O&amp;M projects, equal $6.5 million. The $400,000 increase from where we think we will end the current fiscal year comes from $300,000 in CIP and $100,000 in O&amp;M. And anytime you see the expenditure budget over revenues, the existing fund balance is being used. Taking a look at the special taxing districts, this is an aggregate total of all of the CFDs and LMDs and Eagle Glen Homeowners Association. There are a total of 49 funds in this group. The revenue is 1.5 million more than the expenditure budget. In this grouping, when a fund collects more revenue than expenses, those resources are added to the operating or capital reserves. As I mentioned previously, the LMD levy process is occurring simultaneously, so some of these numbers may be adjusted before you see that final budget on June 5th. The refuse and recycling is primarily a pass-through for the services with waste management. A transfer from the general fund is initiated when expenditures are higher than revenues, and that support is because the general fund receives 100% of the franchise fees. In fiscal year 2025, the transfer amount is approximately $200,000, and the difference is primarily from staffing added to support the refuse and recycling function. We are expecting some operational changes early in the year, so you will see some requests for adjustments at mid-year once the, the workload has fully transitioned. Looking at the proprietary funds and enterprise funds, these are programs or activities that are supported by rates and/or fees. They may also include grants or reimbursements from other governmental agencies. The water utility fund is estimated at $62.7 million in revenue. Primarily, that comes from utility service charges. Some other items weigh in on this, such as fees and permits, investment earnings, and current services. There is a $900,000 increase from the fiscal year 2024 estimate, and the spike you see in fiscal year 2023 revenues is for a one-time settlement payment of $19 million. In fiscal year 2025, there's an estimated total of $62.9 million in expenditures. The difference between revenues and expenditures of $200,000 will use the existing fund balance. The decrease in the expenditures from fiscal year 2024 estimate for fiscal year 2025 is made up of $4.5 million in CIP and $400,000 in O&amp;M. Reclaimed water is estimating $5.6 million in revenue and a combined $8.1 million in expenditures. There is a $4.2 million increase in CIP due to some RICRA projects. Let's talk about CIP for a minute to better understand why the expenditures exceed the revenue. The capital projects are fully funded now, but most likely won't be fully expensed in the fiscal year 2025, as these are multi-year projects. Funds are recommended for approval at the beginning of the project to ensure the project has the allocation to proceed. In most cases, it will take multiple years to complete the capital projects that are budgeted. Based on this information and available fund balance, a potential loan from the sewer fund to the reclaimed water fund at fiscal year end will be processed, if needed, based on actuals.
So that spike in the CIP for the estimated 25, what we can expect for 26 is that bar will be much smaller since it's all expensed at the beginning of the project?
If they roll over and if they don't propose any new projects for fiscal year 26. Now, looking at the sewer utility fund, the revenue is estimated at $34.4 million with 92.6% of the revenue activity related to utility service charges. Similar to the water utility fund, there are investment earnings, fines, penalties, and forfeitures, current services, and other revenues that contribute to this fund as well. The combined expenditures total $44.3 million, including $7.6 million in CIP funding. That is, again, fully funded now, but most likely won't all be expensed in fiscal year 2025. For each of the fiscal years that the expenses have exceeded the revenue, there is sufficient fund balance to cover the difference. The electric utility fund revenue estimate for fiscal year 2025 is $21 million, which is an increase of $2.7 million over the current fiscal year estimates. The expenditures are $4.8 million more than current year estimates, and the increase is primarily in the operating budget for wholesale energy. This increase alone was $4.7 million. The budget for the airport has not changed from what was presented at the Spring Financial Workshop. The avenues, the revenues are estimated at $600,000 and expenditures at $300,000. The operating budget is made up of 64.8% services and supplies and 35.2% in personnel services. The fiscal year 2025 expenditures represent a decrease of 6.3% or just under $20,000 when compared to the current fiscal year budget. This is for transit services. The revenues are estimated at $3.4 million and expenditures at $6.9 million. The O&amp;M project, which includes replacement of buses and the implementation, won't begin for another 12 to 18 months, and reimbursable grant funding from Federal Transit Administration and state transit assistance will cover the costs. Those revenues will be recognized in the fiscal year in which the actual expense occurs. Moving on to internal service funds, these are funds to account for departments or functions that provide services to other city departments. Starting off with warehouse services, there were no changes since you last saw it at the Spring Financial Workshop. The revenue estimate is $500,000 and the expenditures are $200,000. The operating budget is 85.1% personnel services and 14.9% in services and supplies. Information Technology has a balanced budget with estimates of $15 million in revenue and $15 million in expenditures. Excuse me. Fleet Operations has estimated revenue of $7.8 million and expenditures of $5.6 million. As the chart illustrates, there was an increase in operating budget by $800,000, but a decrease in O&amp;M by $1.3 million. Almost there. Workers' compensation, this fund accounts for claims related to work-related injuries. The estimates have not changed since the Spring Financial Workshop, and the large increase in fiscal year 2025 is for workers' comp medical claims expense. Although the expenditures exceed the revenues, this chart only reflects each individual year revenue, excuse me, revenue and expenses, and does not include the fund balance maintained for any workers' compensation losses. The Liability Risk Retention Fund accounts for claims against the city but are non-work-related. The estimates have not changed since the Spring Financial Workshop and are at $6.2 million for revenue and $6.1 for expenses. The increased, thank you, the increase is primarily for insurance premiums. Moving on to the general fund, we are taking a look at the five largest revenue categories that are in the general fund. Those five are sales tax, property tax, other taxes, current services, and other revenues. Sales tax is about 44.4% of general fund revenues. Property tax is about 28.9% of the general fund revenues. And just these two alone account for 73.3% of general fund revenues. As you can see, the top five make up 90.4%. For next year, the total inflows, which is a combination of both revenues and transfers in, is estimated to be $226.7 million. That is an increase of $2.1 million or 0.9% when compared to the current fiscal year. And I'm sure your eye is drawn to the fiscal year 2022 actuals. That spike is due to the pension obligation bonds issued. This is a year-over-year comparison. As mentioned previously, we are seeing an increase in property tax of $1.4 million due to secured property tax and vehicle license property tax. I won't go through each of the lines, but the details of the changes are in the comments The proposed general fund operating budget is $220.9 million. This represents an increase of $19.1 million or 9.5% when compared to the adopted fiscal year 2024 budget. This is showing a different snapshot of that general fund operating budget for fiscal year 2025. This shows expenditures by department and expenditure type. As you can see, personnel is the largest portion of the general fund expenditure budget, and materials and supplies is the second largest. You'll see that the CIP and O&amp;M projects are both broken out on this slide as well. Now I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Sitten to go over Measure X.
Okay, so this slide here shows the estimated Measure X inflows that we expect for fiscal year 29, or 25, sorry, $43.9 million. And you can see the breakdown of the different categories over on the left-hand side. Total funding in fiscal year 25 is $37.6 million with $6.3 million going into reserves. The two largest pieces of the pie allocated over on the left are for public safety and parks and recreation activities. Of the $6.3 million that's being allocated to reserves, $2.3 million of that is going into the Parks and Recreation Reserve, and that's in preparation for City Park Project and other trails and parks improvement projects. This is just a different cut of the same information. Like I said, $43.9 million is the estimate. You can see that this is the breakdown of the recurring at 62%, one time at 23%, and reserves at 14%. And then on the right-hand side is that breakdown again of the reserves of $6.3 million. And then this is a snapshot of the general fund financial forecast now that we have folded in the items that were presented at the Spring Financial Workshop. So this is all the service level changes, the capital improvement projects, O&amp;M projects, all of that is now part of this forecast. The items near the, kind of the middle of the screen over to the right in blue that are highlighted, those are future items related to direction we've previously received from council regarding the city park improvement and downtown revitalization projects. The total inflows and outflows on here, you can see the red boxes around the proposed fiscal year 25. And down at the very bottom, we've taken out the Measure X reserve and then showed some other reserves that we're pulling into funding for fiscal year 25 because we're pulling some money to do some projects where money had previously been held in the reserves. And with that, I will turn it back over to Ms. Kinnicutt.
Okay, to close out the presentation, this slide provides the total breakdown of the revenue estimates for fiscal year 2025. for fiscal year 2025 at $454.3 million. And the slide represents the expenditure budget for fiscal year 2025 at $464.1 million. What's next? Fiscal year 2025 budget adoption. It will be presented to you on June 5th and then the fiscal year 2025 will begin on July 1st. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Master Sergeant Sylvia, any public comments?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okey-dokey. Any of my, Wesley? Jackie?
No, thank you.
Jim?
Joe, Julie.
You guys rocked. Congratulations and well done. With that, if anybody's wondering, there's a spider right here. He's just kind of hanging out for the council meeting. And, he's kind of a cute little dude. And with that, we'll go into adjournment. The next meeting is the city council meeting at 6:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned.